Good morning, Mr. Paulus, me to order. The Shenkington Regional Committee Commission, I'll give a roll call please.
Yes. Hiya Swabel.
President.
Charles Smith.
Here.
Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
Rebecca Motley.
Here.
Tammy Perlin Bogus.
Yes, here.
Stephen Summers.
Here.
Jim McQuire.
Here.
Richard Hilton. Diane Marlin. Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Debraink Feiden. Patricia Avery. Patrick Brown.
Here.
You have a form.
If he's on the agenda today, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Robert, for a second.
I'll second. Was there a issue about the agenda?
No, it's just not usually approved though.
Okay.
A discussion, see not all in favor.
Aye.
Everybody's eating a little slow.
That's all right, I understand. Good morning. Seek approval of the minutes of November seventeenth, twenty seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
By Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Summers. Discussion of the minutes. See not all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, nothing better. Okay, consolidated financial reports, Ms. Murphy.
So you have the consolidated financial statement and our fund balance continues to remain healthy at just shy of ten point nine million dollars as of the end of January. Our receivables for the early childhood, the general operating fund, and the workforce development fund totaled just about five hundred and forty thousand, which is a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand from December thirty first, and that's due to comptrollers' payments for the preschool for all and the preschool for all expansion grants, so we're very pleased about that and we're hoping that those payments continue to be regular or as regular as the state can be, so fund balance remains healthy.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Murphy on that? Is there a motion to step place and file?
So move.
By Mr. McGuire.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Discussion, see not all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have a plethora with the bills, Ms. Murphy.
List of bills, so you notice in the list of bills there are an enormous number of bills for energy assistance, and that's typical for this period of the year, so these are client assistance payments, and also it includes transfer payments to the county, year-end transfer payments, so we pay the county for auditor services, IT services, as well as the year-end auto property and liability insurance, and those total about three hundred and twelve thousand back to the county. So this is typical for year-end in December, January.
Again, any questions, Ms. Murphy? And a motion to step place and file? By Mr. Summers, second by Mr. McGuire. Discussion, see not all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Action items, A, the twenty eighteen budget amendment, Ms. Murphy.
Sure, so the board has approved the twenty eighteen budget. This is an additional department to be added to the FY eighteen budget, and this reflects our award, which we received this week, for the SNAP to Success Employment and Training Program. SNAP is the supplemental nutrition assistance program through the USDA, so this funding is USDA, Department of Agriculture, through the Department of Human Services for a SNAP to Success pilot program that we established with Carl Clinic. So it's a public-private partnership. We were able to get Carl Foundation to commit to over a hundred thousand dollars to support this project, and what this will do is create work academies, eight-week job training and readiness academies for the healthcare field for SNAP-eligible participants. That first academy will be held March fifth. They will take ten participants. Those participants will not just get technical training in a healthcare career path, they will be paid with full benefits during that period of time, and then we will support Carl's work in that process along with our case managers at our workforce development to provide supplemental support. So if the client needs transportation assistance, childcare assistance, any other supplemental assistance, we want to make these candidates successful. So we're looking to, and the governor's office is planning to have a press release with Carl about this pilot project. It's the first in the state, and it's modeled after the state of Washington, so we are really pleased that we were selected to be the first medical healthcare provider pilot program, and that Carl has agreed to partner with us on this initiative, and I think that once this academy, we iron out all of the details, that this will be successful and we'll receive supplemental funding in future years. This will add it to our budget so that we can account for the expenses and the revenue from the USDA.
Chairman. I've got a question.
Let's hear a motion to, yes, on the floor, to increase the revenue appropriation to eighty-six thousand dollars, as all I need the memo. Can you make that motion for Robert?
Yeah, I'll make that one.
For a second. Second by Mr. Summers. Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was wondering, so they're going to accept ten candidates. Are the candidates going to be chosen so that they provide some kind of like regional spread throughout the county to assist people? Are they going to be all located in the Champaign-Irvana area, and are they going to be working on a Carl?
So they'll be from the four county area. Our current workforce development program is a four-county area that includes Champaign, Piatt, Ford, and Iroquois counties. So the first job readiness and recruiting event that we held at our workforce offices on North Mattis with Carl, HR people, we took a lot of candidates. There was lots of interest, so we can take for the whole region.
So it was a regional?
Absolutely.
It's going to be a regional program now?
And there really was a lot of interest, so we're really pleased about that. The first academy will start on March the fifth, so we're looking forward to that and subsequent recruitment events.
And it's really great that this could potentially begin people on a career path.
Absolutely, so these, the initial pilot program is for entry-level and mid-level healthcare, so environmental services, patient representatives, support services, food service, but if the candidate is successful in those positions, they can go on to surgical tech, they could go on to a nursing, there are all kinds of opportunities. The reason that I believe that we were awarded this grant, there are five hundred openings right now at Carl that they cannot fill. So they are looking at unemployed and underemployed, and the biggest deficiency is the lack of soft skills. So this is going to help us prepare soft skills, so not just the technical training for those jobs, but how to communicate, how to dress for work successfully, how to be on time, how to have crucial conversations with your supervisor, all of those things, because again, the goal for all of us, Carl and our workforce team, is to make these SNAP participants successful on these career paths, and again, it provides full employment and full benefits.
So are some of these people probably coming from Parkland College, or do you have to have even that level of training to?
Yeah, they want to advance because Parkland College is on our workforce investment board, and so yes, they would go for training at Parkland, we would pay for that.
Great, thank you.
It's a great healthcare career pathway, it's a great way to start.
Mr. Smith, do you have a question? I thought you meant, okay. I have a question, Betty. Will we see this academy repeated? It's only ten people.
The first academy is ten people.
And then?
But we're looking to have multiple academies. So again, this is a brand-new initiative, working it out.
It's a regular, it will continue.
Yes.
Any other questions? See not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is Yak Resolution, Delitzo, you want to talk about this, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you probably have read in the paper, the Youth Assessment Center, which has been located at, on Randall Street, will be moving to a new location in about a month in Champaign. We're very thankful and grateful to the generous donation from Mr. Jimmy John Leotard and his wife, much to the effort of our state's attorney. He has committed to paying rent for our new location for the next three years. So this will really help our program for us to continue serving the youth of our county, and so the resolution, I worked with the chair and the state's attorney to draft this resolution as a way of expressing our gratitude to Mr. Leotard for his generosity to our program. I won't read the whole resolution, I'm sure you have read it for your own, but it basically does express our gratitude for his commitment to paying the rent for this new facility for the next three years, and we will be presenting this to him. I think we're going to be putting, framing it and putting it on very good paper and presenting it to him and his wife, and so we're looking to, motion to approve this resolution.
Is there such a motion?
Sir.
Move by Mr. McGuire, second by Mr. Summers. Discussion? Hand. Oh. Okay, and I want to figure out how to, the transaction.
Can you present it at the county board meeting, Jimmy Jones?
We'll work on something.
Could I, so what was the, what was the development that required, is it an expansion?
No, it's actually, it's, Unit Four is building a new high school.
Yeah.
And so they're moving things around.
I see.
I can't recall, they need to build for something. Columbia Center. Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Right, because, oh, because of Dr. Howard's movement.
That's, I heard about that.
It's a domino effect.
So I have, this is like a spin-off event, that's.
Okay, further discussion.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the building that the Youth Assessment Center is currently in will be the new Family Information Center, so it's just going to move south on Randolph, and so we'll occupy that space. The choice office will be there, where families can register. I'll be there, our parent liaison will be there, and so records, so some part of the apartments are going to move there, and again, Dr. Howard is going to occupy the old Columbia School for two years.
Yeah, thank you.
I also do want to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Unit Four for providing that space to us rent-free for the last four years, so we're very, very grateful to Unit Four, Dr. Zola, and everyone else for providing that space to us, so thank you.
May I suggest that you and I write a letter to the board?
We're in the process of drafting one, absolutely, yeah.
Very good. Further discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then next up is harassment, polydivisions, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you so much. Good morning. At the end of two thousand seventeen, Public Act one hundred dash zero five-five-four became law in Illinois, which requires units of local government to coordinate or resolution establishing a policy prohibiting sexual harassment in the workplace. The RPC's policy has been revised to be in compliance with the new regulation and has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office. The new law identifies methods of reporting acts of sexual harassment to agencies like the EEOC and Illinois Department of Public Human Rights, and will, as, the changes that are primarily important identify that establishing fines for the violations of any of the regulations is permissible, and the policy is being submitted for your review and approval today.
Is there a motion to get that out of the floor, revision of the sexual harassment policy, move by Mr. Summers, for a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Avery. Discussion.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but, and I didn't have an opportunity to review the policy, but I'm wondering what, if you can walk through if someone had a grievance or a?
Sure. There is a complaint procedure that indicates, you know, first of all, the individual who is claiming sexual harassment should first tell the individual, you know, this, I consider this sexual harassment, please stop. The second process is to notify your supervisor and also report those acts of sexual harassment that absolutely will not be tolerated by this agency to the Human Resources Director, and we will follow up on all claims. There are also procedures in place, you know, for false claims, you know, false claims also will not be tolerated. There will be a great level of investigatory processes to make sure that our culture remains free of sexual harassment. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
And then, could I ask?
Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
And so the complaint, if it's filed, goes to what organization or board? Is it a review, is by, done by what? The supervisor?
The first step is to discuss it with your supervisor. The second step is to bring it to the attention of Human Resources, and of course, myself and the CEO will be made aware and will work together to identify the facts of the claim and make decisions that are appropriate, which can include, you know, discipline up to including termination.
Okay, great.
And I just want to be, you know, I am very proud of this organization, we do not have issues in this area, and we plan to continue to do so.
Go ahead, Ms. Cruz.
But the policy also does provide for employees to report directly to the Department of?
DEOC.
DEOC or Human Rights.
Or Human Rights, correct.
Yes. They can, you know, our goal is to manage those claims if they are brought forward internally as a, and make appropriate decisions that positively impact our employees and this organization.
Now, we did hear something about fines.
Yes, fines can be established up to about five thousand dollars.
We don't have any yet, correct?
No.
Okay.
And we're going to keep it that way.
Yeah, I actually am not aware of any organization that has, but probably somebody has somehow.
Yeah, I'm sure there have, I mean, you know, what's going on in the world right now, this is a very present topic in particularly the United States.
These are the fines, you know, I'm here.
Yeah. Yeah, that, you know, that is just something that our organization is not going to tolerate.
Mr. Brown.
I'm curious, like in the case of Mohammed, our policy was good, we had just updated a bunch of stuff, but like many other places, the law changed, or the state updated the focus in the law. The only thing we were, had to change, well, we changed everything, we kind of just adopted word for word what they gave us.
We did too.
But our only issue is we, you know, we referenced the Whistleblower Act, but didn't reference the Illinois Human Rights Act. So can you tell me, what was lacking here? Was there any certain thing lacking here that was not covered under the new law, or did you, is this just taking the new law word for word?
The two changes that we made, reference that fines can be assessed, and also specifically calling out the other resources of the community, like the EEOC and Human Rights. So for the most part, our policy didn't really require many changes. We chose to be, you know, to parallel policies being considered by the county as well.
That's what I was figuring, but.
Yeah.
Further discussion. All right, see not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Head Start, Early Head Start, of course, I know Brandy's not here, so just for your reading pleasure, I guess, Ben.
So I think it's just informational, I think she has in here her monthly report including her program performance, policy council minutes, and updates in terms of numbers of children, attendance, meal service, as she always does. There's nothing unusual in her report. It's all informational.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to program giving up. Yeah, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Did I see another expansion of early childhood, another grant? Apparently not, but you mentioned it.
On the preschool for all.
Yeah, maybe that's Head Start.
Yeah, so that'll come up in my next report.
Oh, sorry.
I'll go ahead with that. We just received formal approval of the Head Start and Early Head Start Grants in the amount of six million, four eighty-nine, three thirty-nine, to serve four hundred and thirty-five preschoolers and a hundred and forty-one infants and toddlers. We just submitted on January eleventh, two proposals, preschool for all and preschool for all expansion grants. The preschool for all, it was one point two five million for enhanced services for two hundred children and their families, and six hundred and fifty-one thousand for expansion to serve enhanced services for a hundred and seven children and families. We haven't heard about that one yet, because that's still sitting at the state at ISP, but we expect to hear any time. So those two are pending, the federal award is here, which we're really grateful. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Is the preschool for all, you were, I believe you're working with Rantle City Schools?
We are, we're working in coordination with Rantle Schools, so this will be comprehensive, including, you know, all of our sites, and it'll allow us to expand our service day to ten hours, which meets the needs of our children and families that are working or going to school.
Right, Rantle really needs that.
So we hope we won't get these awards, but they are competitive, so.
Yeah, we provided some letters of support for that.
Very good, very good, Betty. Patricia.
I just, I want to just say, Katina and I want to just say thank you to the staff who came out to, for Naviday at Garden Hill School, set up a table there. That was, we really appreciated that. I know it was kind of short notice, but she came out, set up her table, and I was very delighted to see that representation at the school. So I just wanted to say shout out to the staff, and thank you for, thank them for being there.
Okay, next up is Becky with the, the resources reports.
All right, good morning again. The Human Resources Reports contains information about new hires, transfers, and exits from December thirteenth to February sixth. As a result of multiple recruiting strategies, I am happy to report that we currently have two openings, and they're teacher openings with Head Start. We will begin planning the recruitment strategies for the two thousand and eighteen school year in late March, which will include local community collaborations, networking, Workforce Investment Opportunity Act resources, several online job boards, social media, and radio advertisements. The HR department, right now, we are working on a training needs assessment of technical and computer skills within the agency, reviewing and revising the onboarding process to support employee engagement and long-term staffing goals. We are also seeking demos and quotes for continuous, for a continuous performance management system, and a potentially a full-service human resources information system. We are also planning to review and upgrade of our existing Kronos, a human resource information system. We are also supporting implementation of additional assistive technology tools and revising the nondiscrimination plan for the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act program, which includes monitoring of the WEA partner sites for compliance with section one eighty-eight of the WEOA Act and the Americans Disability Act. And finally, this is one of our favorite times of year, we are beginning the, to prepare for another successful summer youth employment season with our local school districts and program sponsors, so.
Thank you, any questions for Becky? All right, very good, thank you. Apparently Betty has more to say in her report.
Thank you, couple things. So you each got the memo, we did receive the audit from the county, from Baker Tilly of Oakbrook, who was the county's vendor for the audit. If anybody would like to look at the full complement of the audit, it's on the auditor's website, and here's a hard copy, if anyone would like to look at it. We had no, again this year, I'm pleased to report no fiscal or programmatic or any compliance issues. The major federal program that the auditors reviewed, because it was over the federal threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand, they chose Head Start, so they did an extensive review of our Head Start and Early Head Start Grants, but again, the audit was accepted and placed on file by the county board, and there were no compliance findings related to the RPC. So I, I just need that accepted and placed on file as an informational item. The other, the other item that I have is that.
Do you want to do that right now?
Pardon me?
Do you want to do that right now? Let's have a motion accept, place the, the important file.
Hold on.
By, Patricia, second by Dennis. Discussion, I just want to point out, it's a timely, it's a good time to have such a good review, because a federal review of the Head Start, Early Head Start program comes up soon, so that works out well. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Go ahead, Betty.
Thank you. One other thing, as you all know, the federal review team, they're, we're having a major federal review for Head Start, Early Head Start Grants, the week of April second, so the staff is really busy preparing for that. It's going to be comprehensive, they will send an entire team of people here, we don't know who yet, they're going to go to all of our sites, they're going to look at fiscal issues, so these are very comprehensive and very painstaking for the staff, because we have to make sure everything, the compliance and performance standards are so extensive for this program, so everyone's really busy with that. The other thing that we're working on, we continue to work with our workforce partners to advance the federal requirements for WEA, which is the federal regulations for the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, so that it is a business-driven workforce program in that regard. We're going to be the major sponsor for a huge job fair in May at the Hilton Garden, and our staff is going to be involved in that, we're the primary sponsor. We're also continuing to work on the labor shed study, which is the four-county area, Rita's team is working on that, along with the Chamber of Commerce and public officials in the four-county WEOA workforce area. And we continue to collaborate with Carl, they have a Healthy Beginnings Initiative in the Garden Hills area. Last week, Delitzo and I presented at the community board member with Unit Four, Parkland, Community Coalition, to discuss how best we can complement that Healthy Beginnings Initiative in Garden Hills by providing our families with complimentary services. So in addition to the home visiting team, visiting pregnant moms, we want to be able to provide support for workforce, education and training, early childhood education, so it's a community collaboration, and I thought that, and Katina, you could speak to that, but I thought it was a very successful meeting to discuss this Garden Hills healthy initiative.
Sure. So we're, we're really excited about this community schools movement that we are embarking upon in Unit Four. It's a really awesome opportunity to really demonstrate our resource-rich community and how we can come together to ensure that students are thriving academically, socially, emotionally, and just have overall life success. So Healthy Beginnings is, you know, it's taken off, and it's going to be huge for that Garden Hills community and ultimately our community at large. We have some other initiatives that are underway, that are really slated to support students and families, so I'm really excited about RPC's involvement and just our community coming together for the families we serve, so it's really exciting.
Thank you, Betty. Patricia, go ahead.
I just want to ask a question. There was a presentation that was done before the city of Champaign, WEA presentation, and I know that there was some, there was some collaboration, we were hoping that there was some collaboration with the Steve Fresh Start Program. Is there any updates on that? Can anybody tell me where that is?
I know that at the last Community Coalition Executive Board Meeting, Mr. Parsons presented the fact that they will be embarking on a workforce, he's focusing mainly on the youth, and I know that he has been in conversations with Tori, who's our project director for WEOA, so in terms of what has been established, I don't have that information, but I do know that we are in discussions with Mr. Parsons.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, a report from Lisa Benson, who's not here.
She has a recording here.
Rita?
Information.
Rita also, do you have nothing to say, Rita?
Yeah, I have.
Oh, you have.
She was talking about Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, everybody. First, I want to make you aware that I thought this calling for projects related to safety, the deadline for applying for this funding is Friday, March thirtieth, and the projects will be announced for funding by June fifteen, twenty eighteen. The funding available is not that big, fifty million dollars available for fiscal year twenty twenty, and the federal funds will provide ninety percent of the cost of eligible items in the project, and the local agencies will have to provide ten percent. This was presented to the QWAT's members, and also I thought provided to all the agencies, including us, a list of possible locations that need to be improved regarding safety, and we had discussions with all the agencies, members of QWAT about those locations, and the city of Urbana, it will be applying for funding to improve the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Ohio Street. That's what I know at this point. I don't know if Mohammed and Zatul have any projects that they want to submit, but it's a short timeframe, because we need to submit the application by March thirtieth. Another item that we have been working on is with the advent of autonomous vehicles. We have been working with graduate students. We have been working with graduate student at the Department of Urban and Regional Planning. He's conducting his capstone project, working with us on the possibility of developing scenarios as part of the long-range transportation plan to address the advent of connected and autonomous vehicles in our community. Then, for the last two weeks, we have been having conversations with several agencies in the area, including the City of Urbana, the City of Champaign, IDOT, MTV, and the University, regarding their capacity, their concerns, future plans, threats, opportunities, possible impacts regarding the possibility of having here autonomous and connected vehicles in the near future. Then that's a topic that will be in our development of the long-range transportation plan. And the last topic that I want to mention is, at the RPC board meeting back in November, there was discussion about business unemployment demographics in our community related to race and ethnicity. And based on that discussion, the staff here started compiling an analytical report with data regarding economic unemployment in Champaign County by race and ethnicity. The report was presented yesterday to the RPC technical members, and we received feedback from them, then we are working on reviewing the report based on the comments received from the RPC technical members, and we are hoping to present the report to all of you at the next RPC board meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for Rita?
Sure. Going back to the grant you discussed in the beginning, you mentioned Mohammed, no, well, you mentioned Urbana applying for parts of that grant. How do the other communities like Tolono and St. Joe hear about the opportunities?
IDOT notifies all the small agencies about the funding availability. We are notified as well as all the agencies that are part of QWAT are notified, too. But we usually at QWAT discuss, because we do an analysis of crashes in the community and how to address them, then we discuss all that with our members, and then decide about which is a good location to apply for funding. And it's also based on the possibility of the agencies having a local match for the grant.
This, this wasn't part of your report, but the ITEP grant for First Street and Curtis, right? And I live in southwest Champaign, and driving down Windsor, and they're opening Liberty up, it's getting harder to drive to work.
I know. We're waiting, in May, they will be announcing the ITEP grants.
Right.
We're already doing the review of all the notifications, then they are hoping to announce them at the Bike Summit in Chicago on May fifth or sixth. They will be announcing the winners, if I can say that. And regarding the infra grant that we applied for, the Village of Savoy, we received an email from Federal Highway, the agency reviewing the applications, and they were clear in the email telling us, this is not an approval, we are just asking to send us all the files on how you estimated the benefit cost analysis for this project, because we'll be reviewing the detail of the calculations that you did to prove that the project is a good project. Then hopefully by this fall, we'll be notified if we receive the grant or not.
And then further from that Savoy intersection east, that, that, you know, the improvement, and I think drivers are driving from Urbana over on Windsor, and if Cur, I mean, we need to start looking at improving Curtis, because there's a lot of pressure on Windsor because of the opening of the Carl.
Yeah. I already discussed that last week with the Champaign County Highway Engineer, Jeff Bloom. The section of Curtis Road between First Street and Philo Road was identified as a five percent segment location. That means that that section of roadway for similar roadways in the whole state is in the five top percent of that roadway in terms of safety. Then I discussed with them the possibility of applying for funding for that piece of roadway based on the recommendations from the Curtis Road, or the study that we finalized last year. The problem that we have with that section of the roadway is that it's owned by the Urbana Township, and the Urbana Township does not have enough funding to provide a local match for improving the roadway. Then we are going to start working with the Urbana Township and the Champaign County Highway to see if there is any possibility for applying for funding next year to improve that roadway, that segment between Philo and First Street.
Okay. Just know we get that.
More questions for Rita. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah. So thanks for all that. I just wanted to add some information having to do with transportation. As you remember, probably about two years ago, I came here and I talked to you all about my interest in creating a new pathway along Bow Yard Creek from downtown Urbana to the campus. And I would just like to report that since that time, we've had a master's class at the Landscape Architecture Department at U of I, used that project concept as a class project, and we received twelve schematic ideas of how a pathway might be evolved by the students. The city council has approved by resolution the creation of a pathway, and right now we have just created a committee to start working on development of the path. So I just thought that I'd let you know that, you know, this is part of like interior transportation, original bike and trail and parkway development interband, and we're to come on that once we get started in the committees.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, next we have the City of Lynch report, Delitso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items under my report. The first one, just wanted to let the commissioners know that back in December or January, we submitted letters of support to the Villas de Rong tool, to submit a proposal to the Illinois Housing Development Authority to work on a land bank offer in Champaign County. And I think you may have an announcement.
Thank you. Oh. So we, the Villas de Rong tool applied for this Illinois developer housing authority land bank grant. We applied for five hundred thousand, we notified Wednesday that we received a hundred and fifty thousand, so we're kind of internally discussing how we're going to proceed with that. But we did have letters of support from nine other agencies, you know, including the Champaign County Board, RPC, and the two, all the cities and everything, so we're, we're pretty excited about the possibility of what we'll do probably with that funding is do a feasibility study of the Champaign County land bank. So that's something that's, we're, we're going to announce here pretty soon. So I appreciate the letters of support. They, they liked our grant application, but they only had a little bit of money, and they sprinkled it around so that nobody got what they asked for, which is always sort of big things, but.
The next item I'm going to report on is the, as you all know, on Valentine's Day, the governor released his proposed FY 2019 budget, and we pretty much tried to track the key programs that we receive funding from. So in his proposed budget, the state supplemental LAHEP fund, which in the past has had some challenges, was proposed for full funding. The other piece to highlight is in, under the Illinois State Board of Education, funding, specifically early childhood development, there's a proposed increase of about ten million dollars. So, but as you know, you know, the General Assembly has to kind of deliberate over the budget, and we'll keep track, see how that kind of comes to, to a resolution by the end of May. I will be going to Springfield next week, I think on the twenty-eighth, with the Champaign County First team to meet with legislators in, from Champaign, as well as some key departments that are, we have projects with. The other budget I wanted to report on is the proposed budget by the president for FY 2019. Unfortunately, as it were, for the FY 2018 budget, he has proposed to eliminate some of our key programs, which are LAHEP, Low Income Home Managed Assistance Program. He proposes zeroing that out. Weatherization, which is our complimentary program to LAHEP, where we go into homes and try to assist families with energy efficiency. That has been proposed for elimination. The Community Services Block Grant Funding, which essentially establishes us as the anti-poverty organization for Champaign County, and with those funds, we support other programs and services that we provide to the community, such as the Youth Assessment Center, some of our disabilities programs, and the programs where we work with families to help them attain self-sufficiency. That has also been proposed for elimination. I will be going to Washington, D.C. the end of next month, attending a national meeting, and will have an opportunity to present our program information to both Congressman Shempus as well as Congressman Davis, so that they can see how those funds have been utilized here in Champaign County. The last item, as you know, the last meeting, I had indicated that we'll be presenting to you a six-month report, and I'll tell you that this organization has a lot of activities going on, and I tried to work with the staff in compiling a six-month report, it ended up being a fifty-page document, and I didn't think, you know, as busy as you all are, would have time to view a fifty-page document. And so this presentation is truly a snapshot of activities that the staff have been engaged in, in working with the community for the last six months, and so I will do my best to work with Ms. Rita to present this information to you.
Sure.
So what I'll do is, we'll go through what our vision is as an organization, what our mission is. So the vision for this organization is that we want to be recognized as the premier regional planning and development agency in the state of Illinois, and we will do that, oh, we will do that by providing innovative, high-quality, sustainable services that improve the lives of all of our residents in Champaign County. Our mission is to promote climate facilitation improvements to health, safety, welfare, and education, economic conditions, environment, and development within our region. So it's a pretty, pretty robust mission statement for our organization. Thanks. Our values are integrity, diversity, responsiveness, professionalism, collaboration, and respect. So this report presented, presented to you this morning, will have some past and ongoing accomplishments and activities from the last six months. This is a high-level continuity by the organization in spite of the executive-level leadership transition that occurred starting June first. And then we'll also highlight some of the future activities that we have planned for the next six months. The report is divided into seven areas, public policy, community engagement, employee engagement, operations, public relations, media and marketing, awards and recognition, new funding awards and applications, as well as some reports, highlights from our RPC divisions. Under public policy and community engagement, for the FY 2018 budget, we had an opportunity to provide testimony before the House General Services Appropriations Committee in Chicago. We also did have an opportunity to testify before the entire House of Representatives in Springfield in their Committee of the Hall, and presented on the FY 2018 budget. And I do believe that those efforts alongside other efforts led to the passage of the FY 2018 budget, ending the two-year budget impasse. One of the things I want to highlight real quickly is, what was critical in our testimony was primarily on the LAHEP program. And as in the past, you know, those funds had been targeted for elimination, we were able not only to present to the General Assembly the impact of those resources, but there was protection put in place in the budget that was passed last year for LAHEP funds not to be swept as part of trying to balance the FY 2018 budget. As far as establishing congressional partnerships, we had held meetings here with Congressman John Shempus, as well as with Congressman Rodney Davis. We had some of our RPC commissioners participate in those meetings, and so we thank County Board Member Jim McGuire for working with us. We also did have Congressman Davis to our Urbana Head Start facility back in October. We also have had meetings with all of our state legislators that are from Champaign County. So we've had meetings with State Representative Kara Emmons, Senator Scott Bennett, Jacob Rose, as well as the treasurer, the state treasurer. We've had meetings with all of our legislators. Local partnerships, I won't list all of them, but this is all, again, an effort to try and strengthen our relationships with, with, you know, businesses in the community, other municipalities, as well as other organizations, so that RPC's work, that we are collaborating with all the various partners within our, within our county. We did have Mayor Marlin from Urbana visit our Head Start, and I think she read to our kids, this was back in November, and I believe it was covered by one of the newspapers, the One of the things that we did work on in these last six months is renewing membership with various organizations, the Economic Development Corporation, Champaign County First, did have an opportunity to actually go to Iowa, Des Moines, Iowa, to look at regional economic development there, became an executive member of the Community Coalition, and also involved in the Cradle of the Career, a member of the steering committee of that initiative, and then did get appointed to the Illinois Association of Regional Councils of Director's. Employee engagement, in, back in August, we had our first full-agency meeting, this was the first time all RPC employees met in one location at the same time. As you know, we're a fairly large organization with about two hundred and thirty employees, so it was quite an undertaking to get everybody in one location, but it gave us an opportunity to discuss, you know, some manage, management things that we want to work on, as well as visioning as an entire organization. HR department and social committee hosted our first international food day, and then we also had our annual employee recognition event, which was held in this room back in On operations, when I first started, we were already in negotiations with ASME for our Head Start program, and we completed those negotiations, I believe in August, maybe, and we have a three-year contract with ASME, and I think that this particular contract does very well for our employees, who are paying, I think, very good wages, making us somewhat competitive as far as recruitment of our staff for that particular program. You also heard from Betty's report that we've been working on a collaboration with Carl Foundation for the Snap to Success Initiative. We responded to the request for proposal for our WEOA one-stop operation designation, and then one of the other key things we also worked on is the, develop the Workforce Innovation Board procurement and conflict of interest policies. Going on with operations, we, this organization, led in the development of the legal analysis and framework for the Community Services Block Grant Loan Program Restoration for the state of Illinois and Champaign County. This particular program has been under suspension since 2014, and I, and I know that RPC, we did a lot of activities with that program, and so we led the effort, working with the state of Illinois, to respond to the federal government as to why we would need this particular program to be restored so that we can resume providing loans and services to our businesses in the community. We also presented a balanced budget for FY 2018 to the county board, as well as to the commissioners, and as I indicated, I did travel with, under the auspices of the Champaign County First, traveled with the entire Champaign County City Council, I mean, Champaign City Council, as well as both mayors of Champaign and Urbana, to visit Des Moines, Iowa, to get an understanding of how we can view regional economic development. of how we can view regional economic development in our area. Public relations, media, and marketing. Happy to say that since June, we have been featured in over, I think it's now close to 30 stories, on RPC programs and services by various media outlets. And I think this is positive for our organization. It does show some of the great work that we're doing throughout the community, and so I'm very happy that we're constantly on the news, but with very positive information. Awards and recognition, first one. Happy to say that for the fourth time in the past 12 years, Regional Planning Commission has won a national award from the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations, also known as AMPOR. This award was given to QOTS for the Sidewalk Energy Theory and Assessment Project. Also, in the fall, we hosted the IDOT Fall Planning Conference, and we were given the opportunity, I was given the opportunity, to deliver the keynote address to the conference And just a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to develop a keynote address on Dr. Martin Louis King Day in DuPage County. That was covered by the Tribune and other various newspapers in the area, and I think it did feature our organization and county very well as part of that article that was released. New funding, awards and applications. You heard in the earlier report that we have been awarded $60,000 from the Illinois Department of Human Services to begin the Snap to Success Workforce Development Pilot Project. We also did receive $698,000 from the Illinois State Board of Education for preschool for all expansion, for two additional classrooms in Des Moines, Iowa. $1.2 million from Illinois State Board of Education for preschool for all expansion grants to serve 200 children. And then another $655,000 from the same organization for an expansion to serve 107 children. This was presented earlier as well. New funding, continuing on with new funding awards and applications, as you've heard in previous RPC meetings, have been leading negotiations with AMRIN, as well as the other utilities, for energy efficiency resources. We're now, I think, to about $20 million a year that will go to organizations such as ours. There are about 35 organizations throughout the state that will receive these resources and will be used to enhance our weatherization programs. Not quite sure how much Champaign will receive, but the $20 million is statewide to be shared with the 35 organizations. And so probably the next meeting, by that time, we should have the agreement for our organization that we'll be presenting to the commissioners for approval, so that we can begin to implement that part of our program. We also did receive $96,000 from IDOT for our land use model development using Urban SIM grant. And then, real quickly, RPC Division reports, starting with community services. Our LAHEEP program, so as you know, we started in October, serving households with senior citizens, as well as individuals with disabilities. And then in November, we opened it up to households with children under the age of six. And then December, it was opened up to general households. So far, we have served 3,704 households. And then as far as our Youth Assessment Center, since June, we have processed a total of 283 referrals. Head Start, currently, we have 498 children enrolled in both Head Start, as well as our other Head Start programs. We did upgrade two playgrounds, one in Savoy, as well as the playground in Urbana. And then in July and August, we did have a group of Head Start employees, as well as some of our community partners, complete the self-assessment and program planning review. This is a requirement for the grant that we have with the federal government. Planning and community development, we started the economic development. There are some new loans that we have processed since June. Flying Machine being one, Star Barbecue, which is in Savoy, Forever Glamorous, Beauty Supply Store in Champaign, Village of Philo. And actually, that picture is with the Caribbean Grill.
Caribbean Grill.
Which is in.
I forgot to put it there.
Caribbean Grill in Champaign. We also did another loan, which came after I did this report, and that's the Motel Six.
Yes.
In Urbana.
Yeah, in Urbana.
In Urbana.
Yeah, I forgot those two.
Financing modifications that were done, serionics.
Serionics, yes.
And then we did one in December with Forever Glamorous, to help that particular business to prepare for the holidays. And so, you know, knowing that there would be a large volume of business, and so we did a modification for that particular business. We've had several program inquiries and leads, and these have encompassed 14 startups, expansions, some municipal projects, as well as other inquiries for other uses or needs. QOTS and regional planning, funding applications. You did hear, based on Ms. Black's report, we did submit in November the infra grant application on behalf of the Village of Savoy. This is for the Curtis Road Canadian National Railroad Race Separation, totaling $38 million. Those funds include both federal, as well as state funding from the Illinois Commerce Commission, some local funds that will, hopefully, if we get funded, will be the total of $38 million. We also did submit the ITEP grant application right around the same time for the First Street Shared Use Site Path, and that's $4751,000. And as you heard, we should hopefully hear, if we were successful, sometime in May. We did also submit the consolidated vehicle procurement application for one 14-passenger bus. This is for our C-Carts program. And then the last thing is the IDOT grant proposal for the implementation of our land use model, Urban SIM, for $96,000. Other planning updates from QOTS, we did finalize and present to the Champaign-Urbana pedestrian crossing enhancement guidelines to the QOTS Technical and Policy Committees. We also presented to the QOTS and Technical Policy Committees the amendment to our current long-range transportation plan, which is Long Range Transportation Plan, Sustainable Choices 2040. The amendments reflect the approved Curtis Road corridor study. We're also maintaining our regional dashboard that provides demographic, economic, and other data from a variety of sources for Champaign County and its municipalities. Police training, I did include under my report, the training that has been provided since September of 2016 to June of 2017. It basically outlines the courses that have been provided, the locations to which these courses were provided, as well as the attendance. And so many of our municipalities have been able to send their law enforcement officers to attend the training that is facilitated by our staff here, which is the mobile training unit. Is it 12? 12, 14?
Mm-hmm.
12. Next six months? Next six months. So, again, we have a lot of things that we're working on, but this is just a highlight of some of the activities that we already have engaged on since the beginning of this year. We are doing an agency-wide assessment, looking at our internal organization. We did administer an agency-wide survey with the assistance of a consultant. This will help us get an understanding of what types of changes we might need to make as far as our structure, processes, and systems that we have as an organization. As you've seen from this report, we are involved in so many different things that sometimes, you know, can be, it's a good challenge to communicate just like how, what we do as an organization. And so this will kind of help us, help to inform us on some of the changes we might need to make moving forward. We are working on, and we're very excited about this, and I think I've shared this with the commissioners before, as you know, we have various social services that we provide out of this organization. With those programs, we have various databases that we are required to work with by our funding sources. And so it makes it a challenge for us to try and gather that data, to get a sense of who are we serving, how are we serving them, you know, what are the gaps, and how do we address those gaps? And so two things that we're doing, we are working on developing a centralized database for all of our programs and services here at RPC, particularly in the social services area. But also, in terms of our client experience in working with us, we want to be able to see if they would not have to come here three or four times, depending on what their needs are, but that we can be able to determine what their needs are in one visit. And so that will take having a cross-functional team. So if you are working in Head Start, you may be able to look at what other programs, you know, can be offered to our clients. And so it's quite an undertaking that's involved in mapping all of our programs and services, and to be able to identify what are the common areas that we have as far as process, and then how do we engage all of our staff and our programs to ensure that we have a seamless point of entry for our customers as we work with them in our various programs. The other thing we want to do is an annual report. As you know, we have so many things that we do here, but a lot of times, you know, either they know us for a particular thing, if I'm talking to folks in the community. I do know that in the past, we used to do an annual report, and so we're going to revisit this and be able to present this report to the community. You've heard about the laborshed study that we're working on. And then the other thing is, with the various programs that we have, we want to look at our, how we market these to the community. Before I started, the agency went through a rebranding process, and so we are looking at some freelance graphic designers to help us not only showcase, but market, how we can effectively market what we do here at this agency. We'll continue with engaging our employees, looking at leadership competencies as we bring on new staff, to make sure that they're, you know, we're doing effective hiring. We want to continue to look at how we integrate technology to improve efficiencies and how we provide services. And then I talked about, you know, centralizing data. And we are continuing to strengthen our partnership with the University of Illinois, particularly trying to leverage their training programs that they have over there, so that we can provide those to our staff. And then we will continue to work on diversity and inclusion, you know, in all of our training programs. That is it. Appreciate your patience and diligence, but that gives you a snapshot of what we've been up to these last six months.
Questions? Comments? Let's go with Mr. Roberts.
Why don't you go first, Joe?
Okay, let's go with Mr. McGuire.
You mentioned Congressman Shempas and Davis, and then the same thing goes with all the other, Senator Bennett and Senators.
Durbin and.
Durbin and.
Duckworth.
Duckworth. Sorry, that's not meant to be a slide at all, but in your next six months, you talked about presenting the organization, and I think Congressman Shempas said, good data, especially during budget years, whether it's state or federal, and knowing that and presenting that to them, because we're an effective organization, and we are effective, and we have good staff, we have people working here that do get things done in the community in all these organizations, I think is what's important, so they understand. They go through a lot of information, I think it's good to have a pregnant backboard.
And if I may say, that is very, very key, and I think that meeting was indeed, it basically reaffirmed what we're working on. And so you're right, we have to have good data that demonstrates value in what we're doing, as we're providing, whether we're providing services or working on projects. So this project that I mentioned, I think, will help us, take us to the next level, so that when we are presenting information, be it to our congressional delegation, or even our delegation in Springfield, that we will be able to demonstrate to them that out of the resources that we receive, this is how we're helping, these are the outcomes that we're able to attain as a result of our efforts. So it's not just, you know, outputs, but it's more about outcomes and being able to demonstrate social, economic, and all of those values that are critical. So you exactly.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, maybe just from our understanding of how our Regional Planning Commission can affect state decision-making, how many other Regional Planning Commissions are there in the state? Do you know?
Ninety? That is about ninety.
Are they the largest?
We're about the largest because of some of the social service programs that we have here.
Okay.
Nineteen or ninety?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Or nineteen?
Yeah.
All right. That gives me a little bit of perspective, also because of the size and effectiveness of this group, how, when you're doing presentations, and you're talking about LAHEEP or whatever programs, if you're making perhaps influential comments, or in providing data that actually change legislation, I'm just wondering how that balances against presentations being made from the groups in the Chicago area, for example? I mean, obviously, we're doing very efficient work apparently. What, comment on that a little?
Yes, I do, and much to the chagrin of some of our staff. I think we're very fortunate that we do have our planning division here, and we're able to leverage the expertise of that division, given that they work with data, they do planning. And so I think compared to other organizations, that that might be a challenge, even just working with data. So for us, I think we're very fortunate that we can leverage that expertise and be able to do some of this amazing stuff that we're wanting to do in our social services area. As far as providing data to influence part of policy to the General Assembly, part of that, I think, has to do with previous relationships and work that I did previously, and working with the General Assembly on some of these key programs. And so, but even in those deliberations, it is about providing good data, so that, you know, informed decisions can be made on whether or not we want to fund a particular program or include a particular program in our budget.
Excellent.
Good to hear. Other comments or questions? Patricia.
Just want to thank you for a well-presented presentation. Just a question about a couple of things. LAHEEP, good job with the state, but how is that going to affect if the federal government does not provide the funds to the state? How is that going to work? And I guess I'll let you answer that, and then I'll ask the second part.
That's a very, very good question. So the, there's no requirement for state match. The federal funds are standalone, separate. We're one of the few states that does have state funding for LAHEEP. Those funds were created as a result of the 1997 deregulation that we went through here in the state of Illinois. And as a result of that process, a separate fund was established where the utilities do assess a surcharge on both their residential, as well as their commercial and industrial customers on a monthly basis. And those surcharges are remitted to the state for purposes of supplementing the federal funds.
That's good. That's good. The less we have to rely on the federal government, the better. We'll get some stability when I become Lieutenant Governor in the state of Illinois, we'll be good there, too. The other question is on CDAP. I know that that has been, that's even an issue, I think, at the state as well. So what do we propose to do? What are we doing in that area? I wanted to ask, you know, I'm particularly interested in that I have, CDAP and CSBG, I had formally set on the committee that provided some of the funding for those small businesses. So I know that you said we haven't done anything in the CSBG area since 2014, but I'm... So I know that you said we haven't done anything in the CSBG area since 2014, but I'm really interested in if there is still a subcommittee that looks at that and provides those fundings to those small businesses or can you just tell me where we are and I'd like to see where we are with that.
CDAP, and I'm a little shaky on CDAP, but at a meeting that I attended, it might have been a couple of weeks ago, my understanding is I think the state is moving away from doing CDAP loans, am I correct? They're moving away from doing CDAP loans. The reason for that, I don't have, but I can certainly follow up with you as to why they're taking that direction.
Those are those community.
Right, and we're a non-entitlement area, so the cities get that, the CDBG money, the CDAP money, the state is not pursuing, so.
Okay.
And then CSBG, as I pointed out, the, that loan program had been in place since 1984. And the feds came in, I think in 2014 to do a review and we were one of the states, I do believe, that used CSBG for a revolving loan program. And they had a lot of questions and so as a result, they suggested that we suspend any future loans. I will say that probably the state was not intending to respond as strongly back to the feds because we felt that we were within our rights to have a revolving loan program. It's a block grant and so really the determination on how those funds get used within federal statutes should be locally determined. And so our efforts, I think, here and in working with others across the state will really help the state respond as strongly to the feds. And so we're hopeful that the feds will allow for us to continue and if we do, then we can resume utilizing those resources and do some future ones.
So when the feds came in and they reviewed the CSBG loan program statewide, there were irregularities in the city of Chicago. And so that negatively impacted all of the rest of us. So Illinois Ventures in Springfield was one of the primary recipients and they used CSBG loan funds for debt and equity financing and we used it for loan programs. We leveraged millions and millions of dollars in private sector funding and created the jobs. So in that regard, as Delitzio mentioned, we utilized Feltman Tucker's expertise in Washington to help us to clarify to the state because we didn't feel that the state had the necessary background information about the fact that this is a block grant, this was a legitimate use of these funds back to 1984. Our records document that. So we're keeping our fingers crossed because we have a lot of loan demand here and job creation is number one. So we're still waiting for the Office of Community Services and federal HHS to review what we have sent, what the state has sent, and so we're still very hopeful that we're going to be successful, but we haven't heard yet.
Oh, well, I'm glad that at least we're pursuing it.
Yes, absolutely.
Coincidentally, actually, the state used the same firm that the county used for its audit to do the financial reconciliation for the CSBG loan program statewide as part of the response to the feds and so.
And the reason we knew about Feltman Tucker is that Feltman Tucker, and this was several years ago, noted a deficiency in our Head Start program and we frankly internally felt that they were wrong. We read the federal regulations, we looked at it, we hired Feltman Tucker, we got it removed beginning. But as these attorneys know the federal regulations inside now, so we had success with them. We suggested to IBCA that they partner with us and use the same law firm. So we have a packet this thick that goes back to 1984 with the federal, not just the congressional legislation and the spirit and intent of the CSBG block grant, but also, you know, the administrative regulations and how those have changed over the years. And we feel that we have managed these and the state appropriately, so.
Well, I absolutely have all the confidence in you Betty, if anybody can get that.
We'll see what happens.
Take care of, I know you can.
It's a big bureaucracy, as you know, so Office of Community Services is huge.
Yeah, it is, but I appreciate the effort in pursuit of that. I think our community will benefit, can benefit greatly to have that reestablished. Yeah, area. One more, one more question, because it's, this is a hot topic right now and I, you know, it's in our report. The Snap to Success Program, can you tell me about that? I mean, I'm really, because if this budget goes through at the federal level, I have big concerns about how that might affect the SNAP program throughout the country. And so I'm here, I see this Snap to Success, can you just give me a little bit of information about what that looks like?
Sure. So the Snap to Success is a pilot program and so we're the first one in the state of Illinois. We just got the award notification this week. So, you know, we've been working with Carl Foundation and the folks in Carl HR to establish this, you have to have a public-private partnership. And the USDA will fund 50% of what we spend. So we wrote up a proposal, we have a firm commitment for $120,000 from Carl Foundation as their private money that they're going to put toward this effort. And we just held our first job readiness and learning event at our workforce center with both Tori's case managers and Carl HR. We had lots of interest. So the First Academy will happen March the 5th and it's a job readiness at Carl. These are eight-week intensive academies, but the participants will get paid both their wages and benefits and they will also get supplemental services from us, including childcare support, transportation support. Carl's going to provide not just technical training for healthcare career physicians at Carl, which currently there are 500 open positions, but also teach them soft job skills, how to show up for work, how to dress for work, how to have crucial conversations with your colleagues, your supervisor. So we're really excited about this partnership. So it is, again, it's a pilot program, there are other areas in the state that are interested, but we're the first one and we're modeling this after the state of Washington. So we're excited. We think that this will be successful, but we haven't done this yet, so it's a new venture for both of us. But we do appreciate leveraging those private dollars from Carl for this effort, so.
Well, where are the referrals coming from? This might be good for our PCU. Right over at Parent Comm University that we're establishing soon through Unit Four School District. And I don't know where the referrals are coming from for this program, but it sounds just wonderful and it sounds like something that, you know, we might want to learn more about when we get this PCU up and going so that we'll have a.
We're excited about it.
I'm so excited about it. I'm excited about the work. I'm really excited because I see that this is, our community is just, you know, you throw us a problem when we're on it and I really appreciate that, that we, you know, we're leading in a lot of areas.
Well, you know, I think Carl was skeptical in the beginning because again, to ask any organization to sign their name to committing funds, knowing that this may or may not work.
Well, listen, we say.
But it was a leap of faith for them.
She got Carl to step up in big ways, you know, you know, he, say, we will, I've heard pressuring Carl to do some stuff, but Carl has been stepping up in major ways in terms of their outreach into the community. And I applaud them for that, but I do think you do owe a little bit, thanks to some of that, so.
So thank you, Patricia, for bringing up Parent Comm University. For those of you who do not know, I was recently promoted to Director of Student Family and Community Engagement for Unit Four. And I, in this new position, have an awesome opportunity of spearheading our community schools initiatives. And part of our partnerships, one of our partnerships is with Patricia and CUAP in order to bring this Parent Comm University piece to our families. The schools that will be slated to become community schools are Garden Hills, Booker T. Washington, and Stratton ultimately, but we're working in Garden Hills right now to get things solidified. And one of the parent engagement pieces is through Parent Comm University. And it's an awesome opportunity to really bring meaningful resources to our families, ensure that we're viewing parents as partners, right, and really honing in on their expertise that they bring to the table as well as bringing other community resources to our families. So it's really a neat partnership. We're in the final stages of solidifying what the agreement looks like and so we're really excited about this opportunity, again, for our parents to really tap into many of the resources that we have available in the community, so. We'll have more about that later.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for the other? Okay, I do need a motion to approve, to place and file all the management reports and the updates. The motion for that?
I'd like to make that motion.
Roberts and Secretary McGuire, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, both in favor. With that, is there any other business? I see none, so we're adjourned. Thank you very much.